They love it because they're awesome, you know.
Good evening. Welcome you to the Monday, July 24 regular meeting of the Watertown Board of Education. I ask that we all please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Davidson?
Mr. McCauskey?
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi?
Here.
Ms. Wilk?
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Ms. Crotty?
Here.
Mr. Vincenzi?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Mr. Dambardelli?
Here.
And Ms. Alveda?
Here.
Thank you. Before we go on in the agenda, we do have a change in the agenda to make. If everybody could please turn to page four of the agenda that was sent to them. Section C, go down to the third set of names where it says the following people have been appointed to the nurse position, session two. Cross out the time after Ann Terzigny's name. Cross out Jennifer Voity and the time and replace it with Sarah S.A.R.A.H. Simmons, S.I.M.M.O.N.S. Mrs. Terzigny and Mrs. Simmons are splitting that position. I would ask for a motion to accept the changes to the agenda as I have just presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. And Dr. Cardamola, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
There's one additional.
Okay.
Under C.
Yes, thank you. Under C, same page, page four, fourth name down, Kristi Ortiz. Cross her name out and replace it with Colleen, two L's and two E's. Ferucci, F.E.R.R.U.C.C.I. And I'll make another motion to accept that change.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you again, and thank you, Dr. Cardamola. Moving forward in our agenda, the board members should have received the minutes from the June 12 meeting of the Board of Education in their July 21 packets. We have had some minor spelling corrections that have been submitted to Mrs. Davidson. Other than those, are there any other edits or suggestions for the minutes? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the July, June 12 meeting of the Board of Education?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item E. Dr. Cardamola, superintendent's recommendations and report.
Thank you. I'd like to begin this evening by speaking a bit about the scoreboard bidding process at, for Watertown High School. As you know, we were waiting on passage of the budget before we move forward with any of the projects that were in the budget regardless of the funding source. The funding source for the scoreboard is, of course, the Student Activities Fund, but I still wanted to ensure that the board was updated on the process because we are moving forward quickly so that scoreboard hopefully can be installed prior to the beginning of the school year. And so I have Mr. Senacola and Mrs. Brown here tonight to talk a little bit about what that process has looked like to date and what it should look like moving forward so that we can discuss it here as a board and answer any questions, set up another meeting if necessary, but I wanted to begin by talking about the bid process and how that began and where we are. And I'll turn it to Mrs. Brown for that.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Cardamola said, our budget referendum passed on June 27, and quickly after that, we put out a competitive notice to bid for the scoreboard. That ran in both our local Town Times paper, we think it's important to put in the local paper, as far as the, and also the Waterbury Republican. And the bid has to stay in for a minimum of five days. So we gave it around till the following Friday, and we received three bids from three different vendors for the scoreboard. And we received one bid for, we had also put on the sound system to accompany the scoreboard. And we received one bid for the sound system. We opened those and read them aloud in the conference room at noon on July 14th, that following Friday. And the three bidders are tabulated as follows. The first one is from Robert H. Lord Company out of Manchester, Connecticut. That is for an All-American brand scoreboard, and his bid was $13,368. There's no deviation from the specifications that we had set forward with 18 by 2 and so forth, all the measurements. The second bid was from Nevco out of Greenville, Illinois. They have their own brand scoreboard, Nevco brand, and this was for $16,233.30, also no deviation. And then the third was from Foreman Signs out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, also an All-American brand scoreboard, same as the first bidder, and that bid amount was $30,870. So it was quite a deviation there in price, but no deviation from specifications. We met together with both the high school principal and the athletic director and went through everything with a fine-tooth comb. I can tell you that the only differences between those two brands of scoreboard, and we have some specs, if you would like to see them, we can certainly share them, but the scoreboard displays, you know, the visitor and the, and the home team and the score, and then the time running down, and then the rest of the football information, so how many, you know, what downs there left, how many yards left. On Nevco, all of the numbers are 24 inches, and on the All-American, the time is 24 inches and the other numbers are 21 inches, which we actually thought made it a little bit clearer. So that was the only difference between those two scoreboards that we could see. So we definitely recommend to go with the lowest bidder, all things being the same. It includes removal of the old scoreboard and also installation of the new, all materials and so forth.
Let me ask a quick question. During the bidding, I was going through the bidding documents and I was looking for, I think they have to meet a standard for like CIAC state tournaments or something. Was that all in there, Jill, for that, to meet that criteria? I know, because ours didn't meet it, I think, is one of the reasons why.
CIAC, there's a CIAC standard?
Well, Jill's looking through that. I'll just clarify. The issue with CIAC was that there are certain tournaments that we cannot participate in and also not welcome other people to use and rent our space because we did not have a dependable scoreboard that was not always functionable.
Right.
And so that caused us to fall under a category that was not desirable to people who need to be within the CIAC regulations. So we were losing out in that respect. And also, there were multiple games over the last four or five years where we could not use a scoreboard at all.
So that basically met the CIAC requirements, not only that it wasn't, it is working, it is new, but it also meets certain
Yes.
high standards and low standards. So we have the right standards that were quoted.
Yes. I don't know if that's in the packet that you're looking for, but I had previously spoken with myself, with Mr. Jones, Mr. Catuccio, to make sure that what was put together met the requirements.
Right.
So I don't know that you're going to find it there, but I know it met the requirements because I spoke to two of them well before this one out to bid, when we were thinking of including it in the budget because we were trying to get some possibilities on what the price might be to effectively pay for it. So I know that it meets CIAC regulations. That said though, Mrs. Brown, I think that you should speak a little bit to the fact that we are updating the board on the process tonight as opposed to having the board go through the bidding process because this is working differently than some of the other bids that we've done because of the dollar amount. So I just want to be clear, particularly for the public, about why the process has been done, the way it's been done besides the timing.
Right. So our policy guide calls for anything that exceeds a $5,000 amount to go out to competitive bid, which of course hopefully drives the price down a little bit. And I think that we can see from the three vendors that we received, it certainly did its job there. And then anything that we award that goes over a $20,000 amount, that would be up to the board to award. And anything that's between that $5,000 and $20,000 mark, the superintendent or superintendent's designee or team can award on your behalf. And because all of these did meet our specifications, and as Dr. C. said, the specifications certainly meet the CIAC guidelines. But I did find the measurements, if you're interested in that much detail, the scoreboard itself is 18 feet by eight feet by eight inches. There's a header sign and a sponsor sign, both 18 by two feet long. And then it's also controlled with a wireless receiver. And we also are being furnished with some cases to pack that all up and either keep inside here or in the press box. So we're also, you know, kind of thinking to take care of it long-term, pack it up nicely, take care of it. It does include parts labor warranty for five years. It's a 24-month warranty on the receiver and the controller. There was talk of, because some of our other scoreboards, the basketball scoreboard here is a Nevco scoreboard, as is the one over at Swift, I believe. And at first, we thought those controllers might be interchangeable, and there might be a reason to think about that, but those are not wireless. Those are hardwired. And we could actually, if you itemize this out, the controller is in the $800 range. So if we were very worried about having a controller go down so that we would be in compliance with CIAC, we could still get a backup second controller and be well under that second bid. So we might look to do that at some point in the future. But I did ask the athletic director, well, how many times has our controller failed? And I don't think he was able to, you know, I think there was one time in many years where they did swap one controller for another. But we've had those for a good number of years. And I don't know if that is a $3,000 answer, you know what I mean, between the first and second bid. So, and we really did prefer the display of the bigger time and the 21-inch letter, so.
Mrs. Rinaldi?
When we have other people using our field, who will use, who will monitor the scoreboard? Will it have to be somebody from us, or will we allow other people to?
I don't think we're at the administrative procedures yet, point of the new scoreboard, are we?
No, but, Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, we always have to have someone from maintenance that's out there. So typically, we make sure that that person is trained in some of the basics, at least, not that they're up there doing the score.
Right.
Mind you, but that they understand the general control of it. So from that angle, we still monitor the way that it's used. But generally speaking, no, we do not always ensure that someone from here is the actual scorekeeper when other individuals are using the field. But we monitor it through the people that are on duty that night.
Yeah, the maintenance department's there. The maintenance department, actually, make sure this isn't front of me. The maintenance department's there for all CIAC events, and they, they bring the equipment out, and at the end of the day, they collect up all the equipment, bring it back. The people who operate the equipment are not maintenance workers. They are whoever, whoever's in charge of that for that night, for that particular sporting event.
Generally speaking, also, if we're talking about a CIAC event, there has to be someone designated from the district who is overseeing the game, whether it's the athletic director or is designated to, to be present for the match and so forth, as the administrator on duty, if you will, in CIAC.
To the chair. What color is it? Is it school colors, or is it, you know, like green, like the one we have now, or?
I believe they decided on a black background, and it is school colors. So there is orange, and there's also two or three areas down the bottom where we can advertise, and those can be turned over each year with vinyl panels. But they're, we're talking to them about the final color, so it is tailored to our home site, but I couldn't give you all the specifics on that.
Well, not to, as long as, I was just, didn't make any sense to have a green one. If you're going to spend this money, you may as well get the
Exactly.
the school colors in it.
Anybody else have questions?
Senacola, anything that we need to add about from a facility standpoint?
No, it should be a simple remove and replace. There's, the electrical's already there. That's going to be a simple matter of just changing out the wiring. So I don't see any, you know, major difficulties getting this job done.
Just one more quick one. With this company, have we checked on them? Are they reliable? You know, what's their rating, if you will?
They had to give three references in the state of Connecticut, and they actually gave four. In Woodstock, Mystic, Groton, and Shelton. And so we were very pleased with everything that they had set forth. They did everything that they, that we had asked to do. And we even called two or three times to follow up with questions because there was one, you know, it didn't specify that they were going to remove the old equipment. We wanted to make sure that that was included. And we had some questions about the advertising down the bottom because we wanted to be able to change that from year to year.
Right.
So they worked with us, and we were very, very pleased with the response. And the representative for the company, which is out of Manchester, is actually here in Oakville. So that was also something that was very, we just felt to have somebody so close so that if we had a question or a problem, or somebody that knows the system, or we had a problem with the controller, he's right here. And we were just very pleased with his response time, so.
Mr. Senacola, you raised, you mentioned the word electrical, so it brought up another question. We had talked during the budget season about that wire that goes across the tree line over to the scoreboard. How will that be handled?
We'll remove that.
It'll be completely gone?
It'll be completely removed. We don't need the wire.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and the, the other thing about this particular vendor is, as I look at it, this vendor's been used in the past, in district for furnishings, cafeteria furnishings, if I'm not mistaken. So we've used them in the past, and we've had good luck with them.
Dr. Cardamola?
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll update you on processes moving forward. As I said, we wanted to be sure that, knew we were on top of getting the bid out and it installed because that is what we had promised as part of moving this budget forward. And so hopefully, everything stays on schedule, and we have the scoreboard in and working prior to the first game out there this season.
It'll be complete by August 25th.
I'll let you.
So we're ready for the, we're ready for the first game.
Like I said, I'll be hopeful.
Hopefully, we'll have the press box.
And that, yeah. Just a few updates since we weren't here at the end of June. They feel a little bit old to many of us who were present for some of these things, but just wanted to again thank Mrs. Crotty, Mr. Lambert, Mr. Vincenzi, for attending the Transition Academy graduation. That was our first that was held at Seaman Company with the new Watertown Transition Academy. It was a great event. I'm thankful to Pamela McGuire and Sandy Amorado, Mr. Jones, and Ms. Dillon for all the work that they put in this year to keep that running, and also the ceremony itself, because those of you who were there know it was done quite well. I'm very excited to continue there. Also, we had some issues with street lighting bulbs over at John Trumbull, I had mentioned previously, Mr. Senacola, and Mrs. Mecklenburg. That was someone from Greenleaf there to change some lighting to indirect lighting because of some concerns with bulbs. And that work, I believe, has begun at John Trumbull. While you're here, you might as well bring that up.
I can't say for sure.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
I know that, yeah, I know that we, I know that we talked, and, and the vendor was going to, to work with Laura as far as addressing those issues, yep?
We were, and I say believe, it started because we were waiting for the, for a gap in the summer program there, because we were trying to take care of it when there wasn't a lot of traffic coming in and out.
Right.
So it will get done, but we're, they're going to do it in a very short amount of time that that building is not being used here this summer. As you see, we have our new IT tech with us this evening behind the scenes, our, our new AV tech, who we'd seen previously had an agenda, had started with us July 3rd. Happy about that because we back to having someone present for these meetings. We have tonight for discussion rescinding the letters that the non-tenure teachers were given at the end of the school year. As you know, as a part of our budget process, every teacher who had not achieved tenure by the end of the school year had a letter delivered to them by me to notify them that I would recommend to the Board of Education that their positions be non-renewed. And at subsequent board meeting, we did that, and they were all furnished with letters that told them that their, their contract were being non-renewed. And we were awaiting pass, successful, thank goodness, passage of the budget before we could rescind those letters and let all of our non-tenured instructors know that they still have positions. And I would ask the board make that motion tonight so that we are able to put our non-tenure teachers at ease. They had been told by me prior to tonight that once the budget passed, they should certainly not worry the way I know many of them were, in particular, the first-year teachers who were more concerned that perhaps there would be very significant cuts. As I had explained previously, that would have been very difficult, if not impossible, given the student numbers that we have in classes. But regardless, as new teachers, they will be much happier after they get a second letter that lets them know that they do in fact still have a job in Watertown. So I'm hopeful that we are going to move forward and do that this evening. That is all I have for tonight.
Thank you. I believe you sufficiently covered item F, discussion regarding the non-tenure teacher notices. Do any board members have any questions for Dr. Cardamola on that matter? Great. And I'd just like to note, I appreciate you letting them know as quickly as possible prior to our board meeting, because as you stated, it's a very uneasy time for those waiting to find out that they, whether or not they have a position with us. Moving on to item G, first round of public participation. Do any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? One more opportunity for any members of the public to address the board this evening. Seeing none, we'll move on to I-H, committee reports. Ms. Rinaldi, curriculum and instruction?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Vincenzi, policy and labor?
No report.
Budget and finance, Mr. Lambert?
Just a note, I personally would like to thank everyone that helped get this budget passed in any way they could, little and large and small, really did make the difference that we needed. And I thank the public for having faith in us and passing this budget for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And back to you for facilities, public building committee and operations.
As far as public building committee, they met on July 19th and discussed design and development documents. They approved payment of various design and construction documents, flow tests, geotactical borings, and engineering services. That's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCauskey, governance and community engagement?
No report.
Thank you. Moving on to item I, communications. Ms. Wilk, who's not with us here this evening, reported that there were no communications to the board to report. Moving on to item J. First, I'd like to talk about the budget. I appreciate Mr. Lambert's remarks regarding the public's assistance and trust in the Board of Education's budget, spearheaded by Dr. Cardamola and her cabinet, and thank everybody, both inside and outside of the district, for the work that was done to both resubmit the budget and then get it passed in the second referendum. Facing an unprecedented state budget situation, our Board of Ed, like many other boards of Eds across the state, and like many other cities and towns across the state, are anxiously awaiting to see how the state legislator intends to change the excess cost-sharing formula and the impact that it's going to have on the funding of public education across our state. Our Board of Ed must continue to stay informed on any budget proposals that are going to impact education. On July 13th, I reached out in writing to both Senator Borthell and State Representative Paletta to express my concern over a very specific provision within the proposed state budget. This provision would give local town councils and/or boards of finance a line-item veto authority over all Board of Education administrative and non-curriculum expenditures. This should continue to remain the Board of Education responsibility because they know best the needs of students. The Watertown Board of Education makes strategic decisions based on student need, and the councils and boards of finance are likely not aware of the many considerations that go into the board's decisions. I do not see how this provision could be beneficial to the students we serve in Watertown, and thankfully, both officials that I contacted felt the same way, and they committed to the Board of Education to take on some sort of associated action on that provision should have come before them. As of today, and as recently as just about an hour ago, no dates have been yet set for vote on the new two-year, $40 billion budget. As Chair of our Board of Education, I'm compelled at this time to send a message to our state leaders. And I would like to introduce the idea of joining the efforts of board colleagues of ours across the state by adopting a resolution urging our state lawmakers to consider the impact that the ECS cost-share challenges will have on Watertown and nearby communities. My hope is that Watertown will not be further impacted, but if it is, I would like to urge our leaders to consider a phase-in period for any changes in state funding in public education. For this purpose, at the next Board of Ed meeting, I'm going to ask that the board consider making a resolution. The resolution would include the following. Whereas any further reductions taking place when the school year is about to begin would seriously disrupt the efforts to support the achievement of our students, let it be resolved that the Watertown Board of Education urges the Governor and the General Assembly to provide a phase-in period for the implementation of any changes in state funding for public education. It also would include language that talks about the steps that Watertown Board of Education has already made, including significant reductions in programs and services. If we successfully pass that motion, our resolution would be sent to the Governor's office. Boards of Education, by the letter of state law, are governance boards with policy and fiduciary responsibility. While making the resolution may have absolutely no impact on the final state budget, what it does do is ensure that we, members of the Watertown Board of Education, continue to take every step possible to uphold our financial responsibilities to not only the town, but our students and employees. Moving forward, tomorrow, I will represent the Board of Ed at the CAPE Association, excuse me, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education Leadership Conference, where the topics will include diversity in education, board member roles in district communications, and of course, the state budget. CAPE likes to entice board members to come to their leadership conferences in the summer by holding them at Waters Edge in Westbrook. So I am happy to attend there, as is my daughter, who will sit on the beach at the same time. Moving on to item K, action items, our adoption of items to be approved by consent. As Dr. Cardamola explained, we would like to rescind the non-tenure teacher notices that went out prior to the budget passing. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Education rescind the action taken on March 27, 2017, regarding the non-renewal notices of non-tenure teachers.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item two, consideration of the approval of the acceptance of gifts. We are very fortunate to have three donations to consider this evening. The first is from Terry McGrath, who donated a Selmer B. clarinet to Swift Middle School with a value of three hundred dollars. Mrs. Shirley Plord and Etna donated a check for six hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents to the Watertown High School football team. And lastly, Ms. Monica Nolan and Etna donated a check for three hundred dollars to the Watertown High School field hockey team. Is there a motion regarding these donations?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of accepting the three generous donations as presented and that letters of appreciation be sent to the donors.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Rosa. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item L, future agenda items and board member comments. Any board members wish to suggest any future agenda items or have any comments they wish to make at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item M, our last round of public participation. Any members of the public wish to address the board this evening? I was hoping for one of those two little ones, but we'll move on. Moving on to item N. I'd like to thank the Policy and Labor Chairman, Mr. Vicenzi, and Budget and Finance Chair, Mr. Lambert, for joining me and representing the board during the negotiations with the custodial, maintenance and technical employees. I believe the agreement reached is a fair one and it represents both a commitment to our employees and dedication toward the long-term goals of lowering costs. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the working agreement between the Watertown Board of Education and the custodial, maintenance and technical employees. Attending the executive session will be Leslie Crati, Dr. Cartamola, Victor Vicenzi, Josephine Rosa, Jim Gambardella, Cheryl Albino, Jim, Jill Brown, Rob Makowski, Kathy Rinaldi and myself, Tom Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are in executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Senacola.
Thank you, Mr. Senacola.